When we get to the applicant, is there other questions of Carla specifically?
Yeah, Jason.
Go for it.
So Carla, walk me through this because I don't believe this is going to be a clustered subdivision. Is that a correct statement? I mean, it's a single lot. And I'm a little perplexed by that because, but if, I'm looking at TCD right now. It does allow for duplex as well as multiplex. It doesn't seem to, other than the minimum lot size requirements per unit, it doesn't seem to limit the number of housing units or the number of buildings. So I don't see that there's anything in here that would preclude nine duplexes if it's meeting all the rest of the standards. And if it's not a clustered subdivision, then it doesn't actually have a 75-foot buffer requirement, correct? It would, I mean, it is simply the...
Yeah, it is a subdivision. You know, let's talk about what it is and then figure out what it isn't. It is a subdivision. And it has to meet either the traditional style, the clustered style, or the conservation style, which we initially weren't thinking this could be in this zoning district because the initial thought was the conservation subdivision style was for the rural residential districts. And I think it was you that brought up that there was really nothing in the language talking about conservation subdivisions that precluded that. So it is a subdivision. What style it is, I think, is less of an issue. What they are able to do, we know, is to look at the zoning standards and say, what, how much land is there? What do they need to take out for unbuildable land area? And what are they left with for developable area? And then divide the minimum lot size for the TCD Town Center District into that. And that is how they yielded the 18 units.
Okay. No, I, yep, I would concur with that assessment, that it is definitely a subdivision therefore. It'd be subject to subdivision standards. We also, though, at one point had a discussion, the town attorney gave us a kind of her opinion.
I can review that, Josh. I have the email here if you want.
But, no, but on, when both site plan and subdivision review is required, which one do we actually do? Which one takes precedent?
Yeah. Normally, we go with the subdivision.
Okay. Because in the TCD, it also requires site plan review. But I know we had that discussion about, does it require both when both are required? And I think we, I knew there was a single answer. I didn't remember which one. Thank you.
So based on that and what we have before us, 75, a waiver is not needed, given that it's in the TCD, correct?
No, I think, what I got out of that was that even though it will be a single lot, it's sort of like when we were talking about accessory dwelling units and the state's new standards. If you put more than, the way subdivision, I believe, is written is it's the number of units, housing units put, it is triggered by the number of dwellings, housing units, whatever that is. Not the number of lots.
Right, what constitutes a subdivision? The division of a parcel of land into three or more lots in a five-year period. So that's what's happening here.
Well, but I didn't think it was lots because that's not what's hap-
Or units, I apologize.
Thank you.
Lots or units.
Okay, just one other follow-up then. And per Section 315-21D, the following minimum setbacks are required for all structures in the TCD except for sheds and driveways. And then it's front 15, rear 10, side 10. That's not, that doesn't apply?
It does apply. It would apply for the setbacks for the individual units.
But not for the entire?
But not for the whole perimeter of the subdivision parcel.
Thank you.
So this is gonna be an important point here today. So I found the email from prior to the May 17th meeting. And so Carla had asked the question of the attorney. There is a vacant parcel located across from the fire station on Tuttle Road and developers proposing a seven-lot, single-family subdivision to be served by public water and sewer. It is an identified growth area in our comprehensive plan. When Bill Longley and I first looked at it, it appeared feasible as it is in the Town Center District, which allows for small lots with small setbacks. However, when the subdivision ordinance is considered, the development is not feasible due to the significant perimeter buffer, 75-foot, required of all major subdivisions. And in this case, and in this case, it is a development off of Tuttle Road. The buffer is increased to 150 feet. So the response from the attorney, Section 250-44 states that the planning board may waive a standard if it finds either an unnecessary hardship will result from strict compliance with the subdivision standards or there are special circumstances of a particular plan that makes the standard inapplicable. The waiver can't have the effect of nullifying the intent and purpose of the comprehensive plan, the subdivision ordinance, or the zoning ordinance. It also can't endanger public safety. The ordinance defines unnecessary hardship as a substantial burden on the applicant which affects the applicant's ability to achieve a reasonable economic return on the property. So that's the technicalities there. We've all reviewed the packet that you sent in, and it seemed straightforward to me. Before we get to that, Bill, would you mind giving input from town's standpoint?
Jason, I had another question for Carla.
Go ahead, Bridget.
Carla, I had, I had a question, and maybe this will be null and void depending on what our conversation leads to. But, and I couldn't find it. Are there town ordinances on limitations on construction and excavation near burial sites?
Oh, wow.
State laws.
So that's what I defaulted to, was going to the state. And so what I found was that state statute 1371-A does not allow for construction or excavation within 25 feet of a known boundary of a cemetery?
Unless approved by the municipal officers of the town. That's how we have a sidewalk right next to the cemetery with that chain-link fence all the way around.
Okay, so, I mean, that was a concern with the 20-foot buffer on that end of the parcel. So I guess we'll see where we go with our conversation. But just a note that I'm concerned about the interred.
Good, good catch.
Thank you. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just gonna connect to, hopefully, to my computer. There it is. Well, when we look at strict application of this parcel, I was surprised that it actually got as far as it did because I didn't understand how the planning board could actually waive the setbacks. But the attorney said you did. Under conventional standard, this is kind of what the lot would look like. The outline that I show here on this drawing is about 22,000 square feet of buildable area. And when I took the 26-by-74 buildings, I could fit about three of them in. The distance from parcel line to parcel line where the setbacks are is about 93 feet. So when you subtract 26 feet out and then 25 feet of driveway, all of a sudden, you're down to maybe about a 25-to-30-foot area, which is, you know, enough for a road, but not much more. I am, I'm really perplexed at why we would do this. Primarily because we, I'm not seeing that this is proposed to be a affordable housing development for perhaps maybe seniors that, you know, would benefit from this use if the applicant came forward with a proposal that, you know, had a multitude of senior housing in here that could benefit the town at the numbers that Hutt are projecting. Right now, for rental units, it's 80% of the median family income for our town. That number is over $90,000 in Cumberland. And that basically says that they could afford $2,200 a month for rent. That seems crazy high, but it's something. It's something working toward affordability. When they look at ownership, they go up to 120% of the median family income, which is even much higher, and it results in about a $3,400 monthly mortgage. I think these units will most likely be higher in value. But honestly, if this is asking you to give a waiver, you know, what benefit is this to the town? And I would struggle to tell you, I don't see a benefit at this point. When we're looking for solutions for senior and affordable housing, you know, we've gotta be creative. And this lot has, as the developer has shown in your packets, has shown some extreme creativity in interpretation of the TCD rules. Well, conversely, I think we can apply the subdivision ordinance and say, well, if you're going to follow the rules that we have to follow, this is what you can do. If you're asking us to waive a rule, we'd like to see a benefit for the community. And right now, I don't really see much of a benefit for the community based on the numbers I just shared with you. So until this goes forward with some more benefit to the town, and especially in the area of affordable housing or affordable senior housing, I would say let's stick to the rules. I would tell you, if you would follow the rules, then we have to follow the rules. If they come in with a proposed subdivision that meets the 75-foot setback, then we have to abide and review that by our rules. All these lines that are on here are basically 75-foot from the boundary lines. When you come into the first parcel here where my little hand is, the lines cross. It's less than 150 feet across. So there's, there's no buffer. You know, there's no room to basically put a home or a house or anything in. So when I did this little pink outline, and it comes up at 22,000 square feet, fairly generous. I mean, they can put multiplexes in that are allowed in the TCD. But 18 units that are nine duplexes and no affordability, I'm sorry, one traffic, who knows what that's gonna look like? Would like to see what the access on the Tuttle Road would look like. And I know this is all future down the road. But I hate to have the applicant go down this rabbit hole and basically come back with a plan that is going to be basically shot down in many, many areas. And I don't believe it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. I don't believe the TCD ever envisioned that many units unless there was some type of special use for the community. And I'll sit down unless you have any questions.
Any questions of Bill?
Yeah, actually, Bill, does that Google view, does it go, can you go north? There's some, across from the food stop, there's a few duplexes that I don't-
All senior, all senior.
Yeah, how many are in there?
Four, six, four to six units that are across there and-
Yeah, I don't know if you can-
I can, this is on the town's GIS.
Okay.
Six units from, there they are, right there.
So it looks like three duplexes, correct?
Correct.
Because they're duplexes, right, okay.
And they also have affordability, they're 55 and older, and they do have affordability requirements, I think, on one or two of the units.
And those were done with a contract zone agreement-
No, that's correct.
Between the town councils.
So this was before we even created the Town Center District.
Okay.
That's how that was accomplished.
Okay, thank you.
And it's a great location. So the other, the other issue that I've talked to Bob Story, our president of our Cemetery Association, is this historical cemetery we have right in front of it. And how do we protect that since we're only 75 feet, with my drawing, off of that footprint? If we zoom in here, there is a, there is a access road that goes through. And those of you who remember the cemetery well, there used to be a shed in the back of it. So, and that, you can almost see there's an entrance coming off of Main Street. It used to go to the back of the property, and there was a shed located right here. Bob felt that if there was, if there was fear of pedestrian access, basically just kind of coming through the cemetery without kind of, you know, kind of corralling it a little bit, that would be a respectful area to kind of basically get to the sidewalk on Main Street. Because, you know, when you zoom out to this project, I mean, you're not gonna walk down Tuttle Road to get the food stop. I don't believe. I think you're gonna basically, you know, somehow do a pass screw to get to the sidewalks or do a pass screw somehow to the campus. So that's, that's my, that's my input. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or just let you continue.
Other questions of Bill? Okay. All right, thank you for your patience. If we could hear from the applicant now, Representative Tom Farmer?
Trying to get back to your computer. Thank you. My name is Tom Farmer, a landscape architect in Yarmouth. And I've been practicing in this area for over 30 years. The applicant, the owner of the property is Bill Wyatt, but the applicant is Maine Affordable Properties, and it's owned by Robert Anderson, who's here tonight, and his partner of his. Robert, as probably most of you know, owns Tuddy Brook Golf Course. He designed and developed that, and Anderson Landscaping. So he has, about four years ago, he started the Maine Affordable Properties to bring more affordable housing to the area and high-quality housing. So with that said, there was a lot that I was not aware of coming into the meeting. So this is, so I'm not sure where to start. So I'm just gonna start from the beginning of my presentation. Carla gave a good overview of the, of the project. It's about 2.55 acres, I believe. Access off of Tuttle Road. To the, to the north is the school property, the cemetery that Bill mentioned. And then it's very close to the, directly across from the, from the fire station and close to the Main Street intersection. And Trillium engineers are still on board. They, they developed this plan, which is the, which is what you saw a couple of months ago at the first sketch plan meeting. It's at seven, single-family houses. They also had a very small setback. They were looking at 15 feet or so in the, it looks like, most of the property. But we're not, we're not interested in pursuing this plan. Prefer something along these lines here. They will be more affordable. They will be similar to the Village Drive condominiums, the six units that are just on the other side of the high school. And we can talk about making them meet the affordable definition. But we haven't, I haven't discussed that yet with, with my client. So there's some, I went through the ordinance with a fine-tooth comb, and there seems to be some inconsistencies with, with all, especially with the buffers. If I go through the net residential density calculations, having sewer and water in the Town Village Center District, Town Center District, I come up with 19 units, and we're proposing 18. You can do it as, you can do one unit per 5,000 square feet. So, and then physically fitting them on the property, I've shown how we can do that. The setbacks, this property is also in the setback overlay two district, which then if you go deeper into that, Section 315-22, says there are no setback provisions for the Town Center District. And as you had mentioned earlier, the sections for the Town Center District, the setbacks for the Town Center District are 15 front, 15 rear, and 10 side. But because it is considered a subdivision, we had to comply with some, one of the subdivision standards in the ordinance. And it seemed most fitting for the clustered subdivision. And then that kicks us into the subdivision regulations, which were, which is where the 75-foot buffer comes in. But in my experience, I've been designing every type of subdivision in different towns all over the place in Maine. This is typically, this is typical of larger lots, 20, 50-acre parcels where there's land to do it. If we were to do a 75-foot buffer around 2.55 acres, we'd only be left with about 5.55 acres. I don't think that was the intent of the ordinance for the Town Center District. But with that said, it's like we're all stuck with the black and white of the ordinance. So we did our best to increase the setbacks from what the previous submission was for the seven, seven, single-family house lots. And we're looking at a minimum of 30 feet all around, with the exception of the 20 feet along the cemetery because I thought that moving it away from the single-family residential homes might be a little better than trying to, trying to split the difference with the cemetery. But there is a state law. We are right at 20 feet. We could probably get the 25-foot there. We could also do a fence similar to what the high school has done on the northern property line. It's an eight-foot-high solid vinyl fence. You can't climb over it, you can't go through it. It's there, it's solid. And we could do a similar type of fence along the cemetery, along the entire property, if that's what's, you know, if that's what people want and the board wants. But it's, I'm all for permeability. I'm not for cutting through a cemetery, per se, but having access to the high school would be nice. Although I don't really see these units as, these are not your traditional colonial homes with a three-car garage and four, four or five cars in the driveway. We're looking at much more affordable, geared toward retirement, senior citizens or newlyweds without children. Just don't see this, it's not gonna be your typical 2.7 children-per-household development. And that's what we're, that's really kind of what we're striving for. Whether it's 18 units or 16 units, that's still, it's not the sketch plan level at this point. I mean, we still, we still have to go through several months of preliminary plan, final plan. We're looking at, as you know, you submit a month prior to the presentation, and then the engineering firm needs a couple of months for their work. So we'll be looking at an approval process that might be in April or May or June next year. So we're just here tonight to get your feedback on this plan. And it sounds like the setbacks are the major consideration for this, for this design or any design for that, even the seven lots or five lots or two homes. I've got some other notes, but I think at this point, I'll turn it back to the board to talk about what you think of the, of the plan or the setbacks. It sounds like we're, we had a stalemate on setbacks.
Okay, anything else? We'll ask questions of you at this point?
Yeah, not at this point.
That's it? Okay. So senior housing, you say that maybe this would be geared towards that. Have you done anything to actually make that formal?
No, we have not.
Okay. And I see the name of the company is Maine Affordable Properties. So how, how are you gonna make these affordable? And in writing, I mean, to sort of protect that sort of logic?
Well, we'd have to look into that, the language. I am familiar a little bit with the Village Drive condominiums on the other side of the high school. I know that two of those units are designed to meet the affordable guidelines for the state of Maine, which Bill had mentioned, I think, is around $90,000 or $94,000 per year income. So there's, even a single-family, I mean, a single person could, could probably afford a unit like that. These are, as far as affordability, it's more affordable than your traditional large colonial with a three-car garage that you see all over, all over the place. These are one, this is a one-car garage, there's one parking space in the front. The units are relatively small. I can go into the details of that as far as like square footage.
They're two-bedroom units, is that right?
Three.
Three bedrooms.
Three-bedroom units.
Because we have a second story. Most of the units at the Village, sorry, I don't remember the name, but Village Brook, I think, or Village Drive condominiums are single, just a one-story, but a few of them are two. And people are allowed to, you know, remodel and expand the second floor.
And based on the first sketch plan review and the notes at the end of that meeting, how did we get here? Because this seems completely the opposite direction from the feedback from that meeting.
Yeah, and I apologize, I didn't, I wasn't there at that meeting and wasn't involved at that point. But Robert called me to get me involved to look at a condominium development because that was something that was requested from the town, to look at an alternative development, alternative subdivision design.
All right. So before we get to final thoughts from each board member, are there specific questions of the applicant? Okay. So do we wanna go?
I'll start.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I am in favor of concentrating as much development as possible within that center district. I mean, I'd rather have, just from a theoretical basis, nine of these things here rather than nine of them out on four-acre lots. So I am in favor of concentrating as much development as possible within the center district and not spreading it out. But I just kind of wanted to wait. And I must say, the input of the town manager carries a lot of weight with me given that I've worked with these folks for god knows how many years. And if the town manager is concerned about this 75-foot setback, I am concerned about the 75-foot setback and would want to see anything more to what the dimensions that the manager pointed out rather than this. And the other issue, obviously, is a traffic nightmare. We tried to, as a member of the school district, we tried to cite a, a elementary school in that specific area, came up with what we thought was a good plan, but were basically shot down by the town. And the, and to a lesser extent, the DOT on just the traffic. So if this thing had even gone forward, the private road thing wasn't gonna cut it, that it was gonna create a major traffic mess. But I, at the end of the day, I came to this thing with an open mind, but I, I have to defer to the thoughts of the town manager and, and the 75-foot setback.
Others, Paul?
Just, really, just thinking out loud for a second. First, your statement that with a 75-foot perimeter, you would, would take all but 0.55 acres. So that would leave you one pretty small lot. On the other hand, the letter from the attorney that Jason wrote is always in my mind in terms of economic hardship, not in the unless part. So that's certainly always a consideration, I believe, and I'm a capitalist. And however, there are limits. The third thing, though, is if this weren't a subdivision, then you wouldn't be, you'd just follow the TCD setbacks, not the subdivision setbacks. So that's, is that a possibility to build something that's, doesn't, isn't defined as a subdivision? Just some thoughts as we move forward. We haven't heard from the public yet, but-
I think anything over three, three lots is considered a subdivision.
Anything, anything over two. The third lot would trigger, correct? Or third, excuse me, third dwelling unit.
That's my point.
So three lots would trigger it.
Yeah.
And I don't know when this lot was split out, but if that's been within-
And, and I don't know when this lot was split out, but if that's been within the last five years, any other split's going to trigger subdivision. They couldn't even do one more split. I don't know when that broke out.
So I think ironically, the only way you would be able to comply with the town center district setbacks would be to have one or two lots with no, with no, would just have no setbacks except for the fifteen front and rear and ten side. And as, as far as, you know, I'd like to address the comp plan a little bit. My reading of it is this is really where that, that committee wanted to focus density and growth, close to the, close to the village sidewalks. Not larger lots and not larger homes, more in line with this as far as the comp plan.
Okay. This isn't a public hearing, but I would like to hear from the public if people came to speak on this matter, Abutters and other residents. So I will open a public hearing. Are there others that, people here that would like to speak on the matter?
I wasn't coming, I wasn't coming to speak on this, but I will. Bob Vale, a couple of Senate Town Council. I, I have to agree wholeheartedly with Bill Shane's comments. We have a housing task force in place right now that is looking at affordable housing of all sizes and shapes for the community. And affordable housing doesn't necessarily mean elderly, it doesn't mean middle-aged, it doesn't mean young people, immigrants, it's, it's all-inclusive. And it's a, it's an important issue for the community to be grappling with at this time. And I want to just digress for just a second. I would take particular umbrage by making the cemetery a thoroughfare for any reason. A cemetery to me is a sacred place and we come there to pay homage and honor to those who have passed. And I would, I would view any passage through there as a thoroughfare with a very dim view. Back to the issue of affordability, this is a, an opportunity for the developer to think outside the box and be creative and do something that is an asset for this community. That being said, the economic return is not based on an option that a developer may have on a piece of property that he hasn't bought but has an option on. So again, it doesn't become an economic burden on anybody until deeds have been passed. And so I think Robert has an opportunity to, to come back and show something that is meaningful to this community, that, that strikes to the heart of affordable housing. A three-bedroom unit is, is, you know, probably not the, the answer to that, but anyways, I, I look forward to seeing the next iteration of this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bob.
Hi there, Steve Pardue, 367 Tuttle Road, Abutter to two sides of this proposed development. I just go back to when I first purchased my home back in 2017. There was some talk about what could be developed out there once they took a piece of my property off and added it to the neighboring property. And I came down and anything that split it into a subdivision, I was told needed seventy-five-foot perimeter buffers. And as somebody that, you know, purchased a home to live in, and I work in this community too, I think I have a reasonable expectation that, you know, that is honored. What they're proposing to put in there, eighteen units, you know, that's not even asking for a little, that's asking for a lot. A hundred and forty-four trips in and out of that if they did this daily is what, you know, they, they come up with. And with the elementary school, I have a two-year-old, I mean, that's too much traffic. So I just ask that you guys, you know, preserve that buffer. It's intended for the subdivisions and this obviously meets that.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Joe Campbell. I live at 359 Tuttle Road, the, the lot kind of just to the southeast of, of this proposed development. And, you know, I, I actually didn't mind the previous plan of the single-family dwellings back there that much. And this seems like a lot. It seems like it's really pushing the envelope. I mean, you're talking about fifty-four bedrooms, you're talking about thirty to forty cars going in and out of there. And I've sat at the end of my driveway waiting with, with cars before school and when school's getting out, and it is extremely busy right there already. I'm all for somebody having the opportunity to build on that lot. I love the idea of it being a place where people who, you know, are having a hard time affording getting into the community can, can have that here and be able to walk to school and so forth. I'm all for that. I, I, I'm concerned about the density of this and, and the scale of what the project represents as, as an Abutter. Thank you.
Thank you. Others from the public? Okay. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for final comments.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't say that I think the seventy-five-foot buffers are sacrosanct to me, but I think in this, on this lot, you know, certain buffers are more important. Certain buff, buffers along certain boundaries are probably more important than buffers along other boundaries. I think if you could increase to twenty-five feet along the cemetery, that would be something I'd consider. I think I'm probably okay with the buffer as it is or the, you know, setback, whatever we want to call that. On the high school side, I think as you're getting closer to the residential uses, that's where the, to me, the buffers become more important. I do like the cluster approach to try and push everything sort of into the middle to the extent possible. I do think Mr. Shane brings up a good point that, you know, that in terms of weighing the, you know, the, the development as a whole becomes important. And what does, you know, what are the pros and cons to the community as a whole? Is there some sort of affordability guidelines that the developer is willing to adhere to that would allow them, that having more units would then allow them to commit to? Those are, I guess, the things that would be most important to me.
Thank you. Others, Paul?
Just, just a couple more comments. We haven't even gotten to the idea of emergency vehicles turning around in there. I, I agree with some of Josh's points, but in general, I agree also that this is way too much for this small area and with the buffers that have been proposed. I was surprised that, I mean, this is a lot in the comments about traffic. So I am opposed to this plan definitely regardless of how far away from the cemetery. My concern that I, I feel like I don't have a good suggestion because that's what you're after at this point. That's why I brought up the, obviously you don't want two lots, but there has to be a compromise that regarding the town manager's comments, Bob Vale's comments regarding affordability, if that's possible, but something much less aggressive, I think, could be accepted by at least some of us, but not, not this.
Okay. I guess my own thoughts are the seventy-five-foot buffer, I, I think is, is important. We've heard that here. And you can argue that that's not the intent of the buffer, but you could also argue that that is exactly the intent of the buffer. And in your own words, you said that that seventy-five-foot buffer is where there is land to do it. And, and so it sort of makes the point here that there isn't land to do this here. I think that that rule in itself forces these sorts of things onto larger properties. In my, my own view is if we're going to support something that's this dense, not this dense or, but denser, you know, it should be aimed at senior housing or affordable housing. Certainly affordable housing includes more than just seniors, but I think the thing that we really need in this community is senior housing to support and help the people that have lived here forever and that made this a beautiful community and help them stay here because they're getting priced out of their own homes. So that's the sort of thing that I think really will help and that's not going to impact the schools. Three bedrooms in each of these units, there's going to be kids there. There's going to be a lot of kids in this prop, on this development. So the traffic is a huge issue. The road is not adequate for that sort of traffic. Just the in and out traffic onto Tuttle Road is going to be huge. You know, I sort of agree that we should be focusing stuff into the rural area or the town areas into the centers, the more dense, but there's limits to that. I think all of this is like, it's just too much. For me, the, the seventy-five feet is a, is an important thing and I'm, I'm going to stick to that, my own view. The open space being aggregated for everybody's backyard, I don't think that's sort of the intent of what open space is supposed to be. You know, when we talk about that, it's like a common area, maybe in the middle of houses, not everybody's backyard added up to equal the open space. I saw that in your calculations. I saw, I thought that was creative, but I don't think that was the intent. And the hardship thing, I just don't, I don't think that applies here. I think you can sell that lot and put one house on it or three houses as Bill laid out, and I think that you will, I own an extra lot in this house and you can sell one lot for a fair amount of money. I don't think that applies. So those are my thoughts. Do you have specific questions of us beyond what we've already said?
Not at this point.
Okay. All right. So this is a sketch plan review. It doesn't require a vote or anything, but it's feedback to the applicant and then we'll see them again at some point, right?
I, I was curious if I could ask, have you done any conceptual drawings where you do have just a few units? And would that, would you be able to fit? How many houses would you fit or how many duplexes could you fit and still honor that seventy-five-foot perimeter buffer? Have you looked at that?
I have not looked at that yet.
Okay. So I think that's sort of where the board was going last meeting was go back and see what, what you can accomplish keeping that, that buffer in place. And again, Tom, you weren't there, so you probably didn't understand that piece of it.
I wasn't in the minutes.
I think what I'm hearing the board say is you're open to having them come back again with something that, that might work.
Worst we can say is no, yeah. Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think if I could just add in, I, I think for, for me, it's the density. I, I'm, I'm looking at that and, and I'm thinking families, I'm thinking lots of cars, one parking space per each is not probably going to be feasible. I'm thinking snow storage, I'm like common open space. So there's a number of concerns that I have with what I see on, on the map.
Yeah, I mean, you, you look at the apartment complex that's, I don't know, there, there's a new name to the restaurant now, Daria, I guess it is. But, but I think the, I think the apartments that were built there, both behind and there, that that's really worked out pretty well. It hasn't created, it, it hasn't created, and so that was a good use of that property. And again, to reiterate that we do want to concentrate with, within the district. So there's stuff in there right now that's worked, the village thing has worked, the apartments have worked. So something can within this and, and my suggestion is that you do work with, back to the drawing board with Carla and with the town staff, with the, with the town manager and folks, they're, they can be pretty creative on stuff. And absolutely, we're not shutting the door on this thing, but I came with an open mind, but that's one of the values of the deliberation of the group, that you come up with what I think the, the board has come up with tonight was the right thing. But heavens know, the door is not shut. Just find a, a different, a different door.
Couple of things. I think safety of parking is, is an issue and the, the off-the-cuff comment from our fire chief looking at this was, boy, that's tight. So that's not, that's not what you want to hear your fire chief say. And to respond to one of the Abutters' comments, I think it is absolutely a reasonable expectation that when you buy a house and you read the ordinance, that that ordinance then doesn't change very, very easily. So that seventy-five-foot buffer has been there and, you know, sort of holding to our word and hold, or holding to our ordinance is important. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your review.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the next item. F2 is an amendment to an approved site plan for Lakeside Concrete Cutting Inc. located at 6 Environmental Drive, Texas Assessor Map R-01, Lot 11-3, for revisions to the water service and to relocate the dumpster pad and shed. Owner, Lola in Pearls LLC, Representative Joseph J. Martin, P.E., Sightlines Civil Engineers, Land Surveyors. And before we get to the applicant, we will hear from Carla, if you can bring us up to speed or the gist of this from your point of view.
This came to the board as a, an amendment to an approved site plan. The main part of the, the site plan, the, the main building is very much under construction and I would say just from the looks of it, maybe about eighty percent complete, perhaps more. This does not have to do with the building. The amendments were, one of the main reasons for the amendment, as the applicant will probably explain, it was that they ran into a little bit of a snafu with the Portland Water District, that the way that the line into, to service that site was laid was not where the Water District wanted it to be. And Water District was intending to have them relocate it. Bill Shane and I talked with the Water District folks and said if it's possible not to do that to, because of the concern that by running the water line where they wanted it would have cut right through the middle of the lot to the building and that would have really disturbed what right now is a very nice buffer. So found out today that the Water District granted the appeal to keep the water line where it is. So that piece of the amendment request has gone away, right? And so that leaves the amendment requests for the relocation of a dumpster, basically from one side of the lot to another, and the enlargement of that dumpster, also the placement of a concrete pad for propane tanks and associated regrading to allow those things. So that is what you have before you tonight.
And just a, a little bit more background. So what we have here for amendments in front of us seems fairly simple. However, there are other people here in the audience interested in this project and I think it's important to point out that possibly these amendments affect Abutters further than what they've already been affected with this project. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
All right. So we'll hear from the public later. So first we'll go to the applicant, please.
Joe Martin with Sightlines here on behalf of the, the applicant for site plan review amendment. Carla kind of stole my thunder here, but just first, kind of talking about what the original project was, it was a 15,000-square-foot commercial and office building. It had 60 parking spaces, it was served by all public utilities. It has received a DEP site location minor amendment permit, and also received the site plan approval from the planning board in June of last year. So the changes to the approved project, there are some minor changes to the water service from what it was shown on the approved plans, but it's, it's fairly minor. They're not changing the location of where we're tapping into the, the water, water main. So that's fairly straightforward. The dumpster pad, shed relocation, I'll show you on the site plan where that's been relocated to, same with the concrete pad and propane tank. It is served by natural gas, but they also want to have the availability to use propane if they so choose. And then there are a number of small grading revisions. Part of the changes that the Waters, Water District requested was that the hydrant, which was previously located within the project, be located along US Route 1. To do that, we had to do some grading, because it drops off probably five or six feet off of Route 1, so we kind of degrade out a flat area for that hydrant to sit. I'll show you on the grading plan. We're also proposing, there's an area where there was a two-to-one slope proposed. Once that was graded in the field, the applicant reached out to us and was wondering if we could flatten that slope to a four-to-one slope so we could maintain it. Right now, at a two-to-one, he couldn't, he couldn't know it. There's also some grading along the northwest edge of the parking lot, which is, if you're looking from Route 1, it's the furthest edge away from Route 1. And that has a pretty steep slope that drains down towards it. On our grading plans, we didn't show that ditch line on the nor, northwest side connecting to each other, so if there was a heavy rain event, there's potential that that runoff could spill over to the parking lot, which was not what was intended, so that's just a small change. And then we added some spot grades adjacent to where the dumpsters located. So I don't know who was on the planning board and who wasn't when this was approved, but this is the location of the project, Route 1, Falcon Drive and Skyview Drive, and the site is right here. And the, you'll see on the site plan, but the access drive into it is here, and then it connects back into this property. So this is the, the site plan, that was in your packet. The dumpster pad, if I can get my cursor here, I was located over on the southern edge, southern side of the building. We have relocated that dumpster pad and enlarged it over here, along with a shed, I believe it's a 10 by 12, I can't read, read on here, but relatively small shed. The dumpster pad will house two dumpsters, one that's for asbestos material and one that's for construction-related debris. And then the shed will primarily be used for overflow from that asbestos. Sometimes that dumpster fills up, and then they, they don't want to store the, the bags of asbestos in their buildings, so they store it in, in the shed. The new hydrant location, which I referenced, is down here on Route 1. It was previously located right in this corner. So that's the hydrant location, and again, that water service is shown here. The, this plan does reflect the changes requested by the Water District, the small In terms of changes to the grading plan, again, the hydrant, you can see here, a kind of a pad area has been graded in here. We still maintain there's a, there's a ditch line here, and that ditch line's just going to wrap around where this pad area is. This is the area on the southern side of the, the building where this was previously two-to-one, and it's just been stretched out to four-to-one. You're still well off the property line. You can still maintain there's a, there's a culvert, culvert that comes across the driveway here, and that can still flow along that, that line there. This is the ditching on the northwest side of the, the building here. And again, just previously, this ditching didn't connect to each other, so runoff coming down off this hill could spill over the parking lot, and that's been addressed. And again, we just added some spot grades here at the concrete pad. So really, that's, that's, addresses the, the requested changes. I think the responses to some of the comments was forwarded on to you from the town planner. There, I did see in the packet, there was some comments from the town engineer. I didn't see those till today, but I can address those today as well, if, if you so wish. So with that, any questions?
Questions? Go ahead, Bridget.
I just have one, I think it's a typo. The concrete pad for where the propane tank, is it eight by 12 as written in your letter? Or is it eight by 18 on your plan? I'm assuming it's the plan, and that the letter is a typo.
Yeah, it's eight by 18.
Okay.
Yeah, Jason.
Oh, go ahead.
And in your letter too, is this a minor thing, but I want to clarify it, because it could affect what we talk about later. You say the dumpster pad will include two dumpsters. Then you say one of the dumpster pads will be utilized for asbestos, and then the other pad will be used for something else. Is there one or two?
No, I see one of the dumpsters, sorry. One of the dumpsters on the dumpster pad will be, will be used for that. So it'll be two dumpsters on one.
Okay. And, and regarding the pads, there was a comment from the engineer regarding the design to keep it from sliding off. Did, have you, you have or haven't seen those comments?
I did see them. So our detail for the, the slab has some bollards located on the front of the dumpster pad, and we have a fencing, includes an eight-foot fence on the front of that dumpster pad. One of the things we are requesting is that the other three sides remain open, which we can, we can discuss. And his comment was to add some, I think to add some bollards on the backside of that dumpster pad, so those dumpsters don't start creeping out to the back. So that's a good comment, and we could add those.
Okay. And I'm presuming traffic and trucks and everything we'll talk about later. Where do we want to start?
Other.
Introduction before we go.
Other questions of the applicant at this point?
Josh?
Josh, go ahead.
So the, there was no, there was no pad for the propane tank previously, correct?
That's correct.
So now it's sort of in the snow storage area, or you, I mean, I am not wholly opposed to it because of that, you've got more snow storage area off to the side, but have you thought about that? And it would probably require a little bit of a plan revision just to close off that snow storage area where the propane tank is.
Yeah, kind of the placement of that, that pad was kind of designed so you could still push down the main drive aisle off there.
Yep.
So that was kind of the intent, is you still have area to store.
It seems in all the back and forth that some of the issue is the, is the relocation of the dumpster pad. If, is it, is that critical to the change for the applicant? Could it just be moved back and made larger in the prior location?
That, that's an option. This is made, this is made for two changes. One, it, it works better for the, for the flow of the site in terms of how, how the dumpster pad's going to be used. And also, it was intended to relocate it further away from the butter to the, to the south to provide less impact to them.
And the shed is actually getting resized as well?
Yes.
So that would be, yeah, it's the eight to 12 to 10 by 18, or eight by eight. It's in there somewhere. But anyway, yeah, pretty minor. Okay. Those are all my questions right now.
I just have one other one I have to, just to follow up, because I noticed I signed the, back then, the condition of approval, and I'm just curious if you can explain how this happened, because we may be talking about it. It says, "All clearing limits shall be flagged and approved by the town engineer prior to the pre-construction conference." I know this was a while ago, and yet it was clear-cut right up to the butter's lot. I mean, how did, did the town engineer never get called, or how did, how did that happen?
I don't mean to pass the buck. I, I was not the, the project engineer for this, someone else in our office who, who's no longer with, with our company, so I can't tell you that. Say that.
Because normally, you wouldn't just start cutting right up to, to the lot line.
Is this the lot line to the, to the south?
Well, we'll, I guess we'll hear more later. I mean, it's, it was addressed by an abutter. Okay, if you're not familiar with it, thank you.
Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, this question is to Carla. When we saw the, you know, the preliminary finding of facts, I mean, there just looked like there was a lost, a lot of loose ends.
Yeah, she is.
With all the back and forth with the engineers, and, I mean, this, as far as I was concerned, you know, this thing all being done at the last minute wasn't the easiest thing to analyze. So I guess my question is, do we still have a lot of loose ends in the findings of fact?
A lot is subjective.
Okay, do we have?
We, we have some, yeah. We have some, we've had some on other projects. It's really, you know, when you, let me, if you want me to take a peek at what they are, it's been a few days since I wrote them. There, there are definitely outstanding issues. I think the Water District one was a big one, and that's been resolved. The, was there, was there one of the findings that you particularly concerned about?
Well, there's a lot of them still undecided, and. Had I mentioned one, Peter? One is 143 regarding driveways between parcels. The driveway is intended for use by personal vehicles and not large trucks, for instance. That was, that was highlighted, I think it was your highlight. Whereas the driveway from Route 1 is to be shared with lot number four, the one down two. But that seems like something that has been an issue. So is the thing that we do, is, is we thrash through the findings of facts that we address these?
Well, there's a public hearing piece that would come before the thrashing through of findings of that.
But it just looked like there was just a lot of loose ends, and I don't like loose ends.
While, while you're taking public comment, let me go through them and see if any of them have been, you know, I apologize again, this is like last month, we got more information. I think I alerted you in my memo last Thursday that I was not going to get the response from the applicant's engineer until Monday, and so that came out. And then the abutters have expressed concerns, and I wanted you to have that, those comments as well. So let me go through as they're speaking and see what, what might be resolved.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Why don't we jump to that point? Because there's, I know abutters are here to speak on the matter, and there's a lot more history that I'd like to hear from them. So, yeah, we'll get to that. So I'll open the public hearing. Anybody who would like to speak on the matter, please introduce yourself and take it away.
Good evening. My name is Sean McCloy, and I'm the owner of Integrative Health Center of Maine, located at 15 Skyview Drive, which is the abutting lot number two to the south. I'm here with Jim Ascanio, who is the owner of the condominium on our property. I'd like to thank all the members of the planning board and the town employees who work so hard for our community. I'm proud to be a part of this Cumberland community, having built my home here in 2018, and then building our medical center in 2019, and we were especially happy to co-sponsor the recent bicentennial celebration. I come to you tonight with a complicated situation that I believe has some reasonably easy solutions. Members of the planning board should have received my letter explaining the matter in detail, but in brief, the lot two owners, that's us, never received notification from the town regarding the Lakeside project before the original planning board meeting in 2021. This was due to an error on the town's part and their database, which has since been corrected. However, as the abutters to lot three, we never had a chance to review the project or speak before the board. We first learned of the project when we received the notice from the blasting engineer in November. Since then, we've been working with Mr. Peters, the owner of Lakeside, as well as the town, to come up with some solutions to our concerns, and this process has become increasingly frustrating, and we are happy to have a chance to finally address our concerns before the board. I first met Mr. Peters in February of 2022, hoping for a nice chat to learn about his business and to introduce myself as a neighbor, as well as to offer any assistance I could in the construction process. He had never received the covenants of the subdivision association, so I offered to send those over to him. We both expressed mutual displeasure at how much of the mature forest had been removed between our two lots, and I think we just spoke about that right up to our property line, creating a negative visual impact for both of our businesses. I suggested a budget-neutral solution of moving plantings from along the Route 1 side to the border between lots two and three, as long as the town plan are approved, and he was amenable to those changes. He also told me that his company would receive regular 18-wheeler tractor-trailer truck deliveries, and that his plan was for these trucks to drive out through our property. He indicated these deliveries would be between three and six per week. I asked him if the trucks could instead turn around on his property and exit via Route 1. He said this would be technically possible, though more inconvenient for his business, and he noted the common easement on the subdivision plan. When we ended our meeting, I said I hope that we could come up with a better solution that would work for everyone. I told Mr. Ascanio and Scott McLeod, his partner, about this meeting, and our primary concern was this heavy truck traffic driving through our parking lot. We have a very busy medical practice, and some of our patients use mobility devices such as walkers. As a family practice, we have many young patients who use our facility as well. Anybody with children knows that they don't always listen, and despite our best efforts can dart out between cars. Regular heavy truck traffic driving directly through our parking lot creates an obvious safety hazard. All it would take is one momentary lapse in concentration for a horrible and irreversible accident to occur. Additionally, when we built the parking lot to the specifications approved by the town, we never anticipated regular 18-wheeler truck traffic over the asphalt surface. The hydrogeology under that parking lot is especially wet. When we began excavating on the site, we discovered free-flowing water coming from the lot above us, and in the spring, the asphalt essentially floating on a sea of mud. While the surface has stood up to normal passenger vehicle traffic, we are concerned that massive damage would quickly occur with heavy truck traffic. So Jim, Scott, and I brainstormed some possible solutions and attempted to meet with Mr. Peters. Over the next couple of months, Mr. Peters became very challenging to communicate with, not returning emails or phone calls. His attorney and engineer did not show up to a planned meeting between the town, Lakeside, and the owners of 15 Skyview Drive in late February. Our attorney had an increasingly difficult experience getting any communication from his attorney. I've always felt the best way to solve a problem is to get the lawyers out of the room and communicate clearly. Perhaps this is naive, but in that vein, we still attempted to meet directly with Mr. Peters in April. He no-showed for that meeting as well, but we were able to reach him on the phone. He basically dismissed all of our concerns and told us that it was our fault. We did not construct the parking lot up to the standards that would accommodate heavy trucks. He also said that the truck drivers do not work for him, and he would have no control over where they choose to drive. We proposed installing, at our expense, an unlocked gate between our two properties that would allow emergency access but otherwise discourage regular traffic. He flat-out said, "If you put in a gate, I will sue you." In the end, we came to a gentleman's agreement in which he said he would do his best to direct truck traffic in and out of Route 1, but no promises. He said he would allow us to install, at our expense, a sign saying no trucks allowed five miles an hour at the border between our two lots. He also agreed to modify the landscaping plan to create a mature vegetative buffer between the two lots. I emailed a summary of this to Mr. Peters the next day in April and asked him to acknowledge agreement to this plan, but I have yet to receive any further communication from him. I've had a chance to carefully review the June 2021 planning board video and the minutes from that meeting. His civil engineer at that time seems to indicate that it would be feasible for trucks to enter and exit via Route 1 with the original approved plan. Now we have a new plan before the board. My concern with the proposed changes are as follows. Number one, as the town has explained to me, the original intention of the common easement on the subdivision plan was for vehicular and pedestrian access to lots two, three, four, and five directly from Skyview Drive. This was to minimize traffic impact on vehicles entering and exiting on Route 1. This plan seems to have changed when Belted Cow on Lot 5 built its property with direct access to Route 1. Now lots three and four have direct access to Route 1 as well, and have no necessity to use the common easement anymore. New language is included in this proposed amendment that solidifies the intention of Lakeside to drive heavy trucks across the common easement and over our property on a regular basis. We would like this new language struck from the proposed changes. In addition, we think that the planning board and the town, along with the developer, should revisit the whole situation of the common easement as it is no longer necessary. Number two, if the dumpster pad is moved to the opposite of the parking lot, as proposed, will this create an impedance to truck traffic entering and leaving via Route 1? And this is a question for Sightline and perhaps for the Town of Cumberland engineers. If the dumpster, number three, if the dumpster pad is moved, will new parking spaces be installed? will new parking spaces be installed where the old pad was to have been located? So, right there, is that showing up? Yeah. It seems that a tractor-trailer truck could easily drive partway into the common easement stub here, and then back up into the side parking lot, and then leave via Route 1, out, you know, out of the way they came in, this way. However, if vehicles were parked, if vehicles were parked where the old pad is currently located, this might create an impedance to this maneuver. And number four, can the landscaping plan be modified to allow for installation of a mature vegetative buffer between our two lots? As an integrative medical center, we highly value the natural beauty and relative serenity on our lot, being surrounded by mature vegetation. I am already seeing a financial impact on my business as practitioners do not want to rent the rooms that overlook this new industrial complex view. It is unfortunate that the town never notified us of this project in the first place. It is unfortunate that the language regarding the common easement is brief and legally ambiguous. It is unfortunate that we have already incurred heavy legal expenses and multiple professional and personal hours of labor simply to protect our property and safety. It is unfortunate that Mr. Peters has not been a better communicator and corporate neighbor. I would like to quote Mr. Peters from the June 2021 planning board meeting. Quote, "You have a beautiful town, and I respect it. I want the building to be a positive impact on the community and the residents, and I share the same values. We're not trying to disrupt any residents or bring the property value down," end quote. So far, Mr. Peters' actions have not matched these sentiments. His operations will directly harm our businesses, as well as create an avoidable safety hazard. Fortunately, he now has an opportunity to take some simple, achievable, budget-neutral steps to protect and help his new community. As I said, I am proud to be a part of a community that shares, that values the balance between smart development and maintaining the character that attracted us here in the first place. I am very grateful to all of you for listening so closely, and I hope you can help all of us to come to a positive solution. Thank you and be well.
Thank you, Sean. Others? Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Bill Shane, Town Manager. Tonight before the meeting, I presented the planning board with a memo after my conversations with the town attorney that started last Friday. And last Friday, where they began, it was all around the 40-foot access easement. That easement has been approved on subdivision plan after subdivision plan. And unless those notes are rescinded and the planning board approves that removal, those stand in effect right from the First Amendment. And then they're layered on top of as they increase from amendment to amendment. So when I look at the 40-foot easement that's for vehicular, as well as pedestrian access across the backs of those lots, it was envisioned that the 2,000-foot stretch of roadway that exists between the entrance of Casco Bay Drive and Skyview Drive should have a interconnection so that if you were going to your doctor's office, you can go to your veterinarian, you could go to somewhere, without always having to come out onto Route 1. And this is something that the planning board, Josh, Peter, it must have been 15 years ago, we looked at that when Falmouth was having all the issues and said, "That makes a lot of sense. Let's see if we can do that." The town attorney totally agreed with that, totally agreed that that easement is in effect and in place. And then we talked a little bit further about this current use, Lakeside concrete, and the tractor-trailer trucks. And what I, what I will say to the board tonight is basically that the tractor-trailer trucks were not presented as part of any traffic circulation plan intending to use the common easement. Therefore, it's the town's position that until the planning board has the ability to review a traffic analysis plan depicting how passenger cars, pedestrians, and emergency vehicles are protected by this proposed use of these vehicles, and how they are consistent with our site plan ordinance, Section 229, 10B, 1, and 3, we're going to basically put Lakeside concrete on notice that tractor-trailer trucks, large service trucks, and all vehicles that are not considered typical passenger or emergency vehicles shall be prohibited from the use of the common access until proper review through a site plan amendment process can be done by the planning board. The town attorney was very clear with this statement. She helped me craft it, and she basically said that you had not been able to review what impact would happen to any of these lots along this common easement. What I heard today, presented by Dr. McCloy, is not something the town's going to propose. We're not going to propose to eliminate that. That's not in our rights. It's in your rights as an owner, it's in everyone, all the way up to Belted Cow's rights, to propose that. And if you want to come back to us and say, "We'd like to remove this as a condition of approval," that will be something the board can deliberate on and can, you know, depending on if everybody basically agrees to it. So from my perspective, we have not thoroughly vetted whether that common access easement can be used for anything more than what it was originally proposed for, was for pedestrian access and passenger vehicles to pass through here. I don't recall until I saw this applicant, I think it's on number nine, where it talks about the common easement again in the Sightline's proposal. It was on their cover letter packet, that they brought that up again. So I would encourage you to not deliberate on that, because you have nothing to deliberate on at this meeting. And we are going to move forward effective tomorrow morning, putting them on notice that you can't do it. You can't do it until the planning board says, "Okay, it's okay, and that access is safe for pedestrians as well as vehicular traffic." When you're riding through a doctor's office parking lot, like we had envisioned, it's not, was never envisioned for tractor-trailer trucks and heavy-duty equipment. It really was not. It was really to try to lessen the traffic impacts on Route 1. And this, because of the lack of consistency on the notes that were on the plans, when you look at the current amendment of the plan, you won't find Note 30. But it doesn't mean Note 30 doesn't go away. It's still in effect and still impacts the burdening of that common access easement. So from my perspective, kind of no harm, no foul yet. But we will let everyone up there know until that is brought forward to the board, and they can show through a traffic analysis plan that tractor-trailer trucks are safe going through there. We're going to basically ask them to stop that activity and prohibit that from the future. Or else they will receive a notice of violation from our court officer, and then the process, another process will begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Bill? Bill? Question? But is it the town's position that whatever that common easement allowed for or did not allow for at the time this plan was originally approved is exactly the same as it is now? So in other words, this, these site plan amendments have nothing to do with whatever is allowed or not allowed on that common easement?
That is correct, except that as part of this site plan review for this particular project, I don't believe you've ever received any analysis that showed tractor-trailer trucks going out to Skyview Drive. And that's what the town contends.
Correct, but there isn't anything in this amendment that is asking for access to that common easement either. We are not approving access.
You are not.
So, so my position, barring any other information, my position of that easement is that is it exactly the same as it was when we previously approved this? And the, in this amendment, this request for amendment does not, we're not allowing any different use of that easement than we did before, whatever that use, whatever that allowed use may or may not be. This is not changing.
I don't disagree with that portion, except in the application packet before you tonight, there is a reference to the common easement, and that there is no restrictions on those common eas, on this common easement. Our position as the town is that the, it's not so much a matter of the restrictions, but the use of that common easement was not brought before this board and with a traffic analysis plan that could show that there are safety measures in place to protect pedestrians, as well as passenger and emergency vehicles. And that's, if that comment wasn't in the applicant, I would be basically talking to them and saying, "I don't see anywhere where you are allowed to bring tractor-trailer trucks through this easement."
Yeah, I was, Bill, and for Carla and the board, at 1.4.3, driveways between parcels, the finding highlighted in yellow, it says, "This driveway is intended for use by personal vehicles and not large trucks." So we have that as part?
Well, that, that's something that got, here's my problem, is we are adding that in the findings of fact, which was not in the original approval.
The original.
I, I'm not saying that that's incorrect. I'm just not sure I'm ready to make that statement, because I don't believe we ever specifically, we didn't find that finding before.
Well, you were, you weren't asked to.
I, I'm not saying that we were. I'm not saying that that's an inaccurate finding. I'm just saying, how, I, you're asking us to make a finding of a, of something that's contested, and I don't have any knowledge of it.
I, I will share with you that there's two things happening here that I think are problematic. One is that they're asking for the dumpster to be relocated. And I think that's going to impact their ability to maneuver their trucks in and out from Route 1. Second is that I was very clear in talking about this circulation plan that the trucks needed to be able to go in, back into the loading docks, and pull back out to Route 1. At that point, there was never any discussion of those trucks going across Dr. McCloy's property. So the fact that that has been added as a finding, I think is, is appropriate.
I, I'm not sure I agree with you. I understand your sentiment. And I don't want to, I'm not taking the position that the driveway should be intended for use of tractor-trailer trucks. I am simply saying that I'm not convinced we ever made a finding on whether or not tractor-trailer trucks could use that common easement previously. And we're not being presented with anything that changes my mind as to whether it should be used or should not be used, or can be used or cannot be used. I'm simply saying, I do find that, you know, moving, I mean...
One point, Josh, isn't that what Bill just presented to us, was information from the town attorney?
And that's the town's position. And I'm perfectly happy to let the town take whatever action the town feels it needs to take. But we are not the town. And I, I'm just telling you where I come down on this. I don't think I want to, right now, my position is I'm not sure I want to move that dumpster to the proposed location. I might be fine with it getting bigger in the prior location. But I do think that the new location could prohibit internal traffic flow as it was originally presented. All I'm saying is, I'm not convinced we know anything more about that common easement and what is allowed on that common easement, or not allowed on that common easement, any more than when we first heard this project. And therefore, I don't see why we're changing that finding of fact from what we originally approved.
So what the planning board looked at initially was a building to be built, the nature of that building, the entrance way into the rear parking lot, the Route 1 design standards. You might recall, originally, those loading bays, garage chores, were going to be on the side facing north on Route 1. And town said, "Could you put them on the rear?" And they didn't want to do it, but they did it. And I made certain that in doing so, they still had the ability to get their vehicles in and out on Route 1. So it was never communicated at that meeting that they were going to do anything other than come in and out off Route 1. And then suddenly, this comes up. And it seemed appropriate that the town tried to clarify what was presented to the board, what was approved by the board, and whether what is happening now was part of that approval. And I know that Peter Kennedy, who is the original property owner and developer, we went through a lot of iterations with Cumberland Forside Village. He's here tonight, I think, to speak to say it was never his intention that that passageway be used for that. It was never my mind that that's what it would be used for. It was simply for cars to go between the buildings. And I think it's a, personally, I think it's a gross overburdening of that easement that it's being used the way it is. And I think the board needs to think about that.
Okay. Public comment is still open. Do you have, do you have something on that? Yep, if we can, yep. Please introduce yourself, if you would.
I'm Ryan Peters. I'm the owner of Lakeside Concrete and its property. First, I'd just like to thank Mr. Shane and Ms. Nixon for their support and help with the Portland Water District and the incident we had there with the water line. And they were very helpful to get that corrected, and I really appreciate their support. And regarding, regarding our dumpster relocation, we're, we're happy to leave the dumpster where you already approved it. We're moving it away from our neighbor, who's very particular about what they want on that, you know, on that property line. So I thought they wouldn't want to look at the dumpster. But I guess we can just leave it where it was shown, withdraw our application, if that's what's wanted. But regarding our traffic, I've already, I've already told these gentlemen that they should really wait until we occupy the building, and see what the traffic is going to be like. We typically get two deliveries a week, and at times, we've gotten more than that. We receive equipment that's sometimes on a pallet. We have our fork truck that comes out to the delivery truck and unloads it, and the delivery truck drives off. The delivery drivers, you know, they, they park wherever they want. They, you've seen, I'm sure you've seen FedEx trucks and UPS trucks. They park in all kinds of inopportune spots. They just want to get unloaded and leave. And when that delivery truck shows up, I don't know which common carrier might be bringing us a pallet from the other side of the country. I don't have any control over that. I don't have a loading dock. If I, if I had a lot of deliveries, I'd have a loading dock. It's not like we have a lot of deliveries here. We are going to unload occasionally. We'll have a full tractor-trailer load of cardboard drums that we put our asbestos in. And those drums immediately get shuttled right into the building, and the truck leaves. So that, that happens about once a month. Other than that, we get equipment occasionally delivered, like a pallet of poly that we use to build our asbestos containment. It's, the pallet shows up, and he's, he's out in about 10 minutes. And we're happy to ask him to turn around, but we don't have any control over whether he turns around. And this is a common access easement. We have an easement through their property. When we bought this lot, it, we had an easement. We had two different ways to get in and out of the lot. And to be told that now we only have one way to get in and out of the lot, that's, that's not appropriate. This is a commercial subdivision. Commercial traffic should be expected. But to hear everyone say that we don't think that that should have ever been expected, this is a commercial lot. It's a commercial subdivision with a commercial access easement. To say that we don't have that anymore is, it's, I'm just shocked to even hear that. Perhaps, I don't know. It's, I'm, I'm just, I'm really, really surprised. If, if you prefer, we can just remove this amendment, and we'll put the dumpster where it was shown. And I, I don't know why we're talking about traffic here. We're, we're just moving our dumpster 300 feet from their property line, so that they wouldn't have to look at it. But I, thank you.
Can I, question? If it goes back to the original location, would you still like to have the size increased to the 20 by 30?
Yes, that's what I had always asked for. We have, we have two dumpsters, one for general debris, one for our asbestos. The asbestos dumpster is an enclosed dumpster, so it's really more of a container. And the door is on the back of that dumpster. And it's a seven-foot by seven-foot door. The entire door opens on the back of it. So the fence can't be there. We have to be able to load our cardboard drums into the container on a daily basis. And that asbestos dumpster is moved once a month. And... And we fill it, like every day or every other business day, we put like two cardboard drums in it. And everything that goes into the dumpster is either sealed in a drum or a bag. And it's typically mostly drums because they're the easiest to maneuver. But we have to be able to park behind the dumpster, open that door, and move the drum into the dumpster. So for access reasons, the whole idea of having a gate all the way around the dumpster just really doesn't work.
Could you, if, could it be screened to the side of the abutter and towards Route 1? And leaving the other two sides open?
Well, the front of it, the truck needs to unload it from one side, and we need the door to open on the opposite side. So two sides need to be enclosed. Another reason that we were trying to move it is because we have a rock wall on two sides in that corner. So it would have no impact on those two sides because.
Okay. But I mean, so you could do, two adjacent sides could be screened?
No, the two opposite sides. The two long sides of the dumpster can be screened. The two short sides of the dumpster really can't be.
Okay.
Could I ask a question too? Or are you done, Josh?
Right now, you've relocated the shed to kind of go to the new location. If the dumpster goes back, do you want the shed to go back or do you want it to stay in the new location? Since that doesn't seem to affect traffic circulation whatsoever.
We're not even sure we need the shed, but we had just asked for to be allowed to put one there.
Would you rather have it in the new location or back at the old location is all my?
Probably the new location. We don't need to have it on the pavement.
And then just one quick question for the engineer. If the dumpsters go back to that old location, is that going to affect the location of the propane tank and snow removal? Because now you're going to have, you're not going to be able to plow along that one edge. Or can you move it? You've got quite a bit of space to be able to redirect it, but.
Yeah, no, I don't think it would impact. It would be the same as it was designed before. It'd be a little bit bigger, you know, to the size we're asking for now. But it would impact snow. It'd make snow removal a little bit more tricky in that area. You'd have to back drag a little bit more area.
But you could make it work?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Mr. Peters, could I ask you just a couple of things? I remember when you were, when you presented before, in my recollection, it's kind of like Carla's, that there was nothing about trucks going across. But so anyway, I reviewed the minutes from '21, I think June 15th, 2021. It was not real specific. It may be the video, I didn't see the video. But my question is regarding the comments, given the clear cutting and the comments on landscaping, do you have any thoughts about anything that could be done there or that you'd be willing to help with or work with between the sites? And again, I haven't been up there. We haven't had a site walk or anything.
We cut all the trees on our side of the property line. They cut all the trees on their side of the property line.
Oh, is that true?
Yeah.
Okay, that, of course, I didn't know. So there's just nothing between the buildings? So then I guess I'd come back to, given the comment about having trouble getting new MDs in because they're looking at, you know, maybe somebody else has to deal with it. Again, it's pretty hard, we're sitting up here, what could be done and what could we facilitate, if anything? Okay, and then.
I don't have a problem with paying for some landscaping. We have a landscaping budget with this building.
That was in the minutes, but it wasn't very specific from a year, about a year ago.
I mean, after the way that we've been treated recently, I'm really not inclined to split the cost of landscaping along our property line with them any longer.
I think we're getting into the weeds a little bit and outside of our purview, perhaps.
Well, that was an issue that came up.
I think we're way outside the purview because this common access easement is between property owners. It has nothing to do with the town, in my opinion.
Well, it had to do with the original discussion and application.
You're getting involved in.
No, I'm not. I'm just asking.
Property owners, though, is what we're doing.
I'm not sure that's completely true, but I understand what you're saying.
Okay, all right, thank you.
When this board reviews anything, it's based on the information that we're given and there are certain assumptions there. And any easement generally has limits to it. But I think you're right that it is likely a civil matter. Public comment is still open, so we'll hear from others.
At the risk of overbearing you with my presence here, two things strike me. One is the acrimony between the property owners, abutting property owners, and the lack of communication. As a town councillor, I find that disturbing that this type of activity is going on in our community, that people can't find a way to communicate. I just, I don't like that. And I would urge the planning board, and I don't have a position on this this evening, but I would urge the board to table this and have a site walk. I think it's appropriate for the board to visualize what's going on down there. And I think that maybe that might help any decisions you might make.
Thank you, Bob.
Hello. My name is Brittany Peters and my husband and I are lifelong renters. And I thought that during the last discussion regarding housing development, when you guys thought it was very appropriate to consider that the gentleman had purchased his property with a 75-foot setback, that that was important for the town to stick with that. I think it's also important for the town to stick with that we have an easement, that we have two accesses to that property, in and out on both sides. That is how we bought this property and that is how it should stay.
Thank you.
Can I apply to Mr. Peters?
Public comment is still open.
Just to be clear, the town has total agreement with you that there is a 40-foot easement for pedestrians and passenger use. It is not clear, and it was not presented in your application to the planning board, that larger trucks would burden that easement. And had it been, the planning board could have deliberated on that, perhaps giving you conditions or giving you more things. It's not just to your lot. It's to every one of those lots, all the way across from Belted Cow. So if Belted Cow started coming across all the way from there to deliver something to Exactitude, we would have the same issue. So until that is presented to the board as part of an amendment to your site plan, we can't allow you to do it. And that's, you know, that's probably going to get worked out in the courts. So I'm okay with that, but I just want to be clear. We're not saying the easement doesn't exist. We're just saying that the way it was now being presented, that it would be used by larger vehicles than what was originally imagined or what is allowed through the site plan review ordinance, we can't do it. So the town's not going to do it until the planning board has had a chance to review it.
So that easement is to not be used by any large truck. So no matter who receives a large delivery, there should be no 18-wheelers delivered through that easement, ever. Is that correct? Is that correct?
It was not part of your site plan application.
Okay.
And there is.
Belted Cow can receive leather shipments or they could receive medical equipment on a large shipment?
Up their driveway, their private driveway, as could you on your private driveway, or shared in this case?
Theirs goes through an easement as well. Is that not correct?
I don't understand what you're saying. Theirs goes through.
An easement goes through, so is that not correct?
The difficulty that I think you're having with this is that you proposed a site plan. And one of the findings of fact that the planning board had to make was that there was safe, adequate circulation for the proposed use. As I said previously, the trucks that were needed for your operation, we knew they were going to be large and I specifically made sure that they would be able to maneuver on your property. Nothing was ever said about, oh, we're going to also bring these vehicles out through that easement. If that had been done, the board would have had the chance to consider that. There is a standard condition of approval that all plans have. And it says that this approval is dependent upon and limited to the proposals and plans contained in the application and supporting documents submitted by the applicant. Any variation from the plans, proposals, and supporting documents, except to minimus changes, which do not affect approval standards, is subject to review and approval by the planning board prior to implementation. If that wasn't part of your application, and now you're doing that, as the town manager said, you need to come back and ask for it. It wasn't part of your original approval. Yes, you have the easement, but it wasn't part of your site plan approval.
The communication between lots was something that the town of Cumberland actually had written on their review, was that they wanted communication between lots because you didn't want us entering Route 1 from each individual driveway. If each individual lot had an entrance onto Route 1, then that would disrupt traffic on Route 1. So for safety reasons and for traffic reasons, they wanted communication between lots when the subdivision was created. That's evident. And to now say that now that subdivision's created, now we don't want communication between lots, you're changing.
Not communication, it's the connection, it's the use of that. And that's all that we are saying, is that come back to the board if that's what you intend to do and talk about that. You didn't get approval for that initially. And now you're doing something that you didn't get approval for.
I have a building with five overhead doors. I'm a construction company. At the last plan review, we talked about dumpsters. Obviously, there's going to be a big truck that moves the dumpsters. Obviously, there's going to be trucks that park inside this garage.
Right, and you talked about that. We all talked about that.
Yeah, so how is it such a surprise that now we have commercial traffic?
Because you're exiting not through the main entrance, which was what was discussed before. Having been through this myself, easements are funny things as far as overburdening them. And again, I think this is going to end up being a civil matter, but.
I was going to wait till after the public hearing was closed. But I think, you know, going back and forth of what can be allowed in the easement, what cannot be, should be noted that none of the changes requested at this time has anything to do with access easement, traffic easement there. What Mr. Shane indicated is that tomorrow, you're going to issue a declaration or something saying that no truck traffic can be allowed in that easement. That's fine. That'd be separate from this amendment. And my comment addressing truck traffic was related to their comment on the findings of fact or whatever that document's called. So I think all we're asking at this point is that that language be removed from the approval. And the town can go forth and issue whatever declaration they want to and, you know, with their legal opinion. And I'm sure Mr. Peters' attorney will have his own legal opinion. That's what attorneys do. And then they can discuss and, you know, argue about it separate from this. But I don't think any of the changes that we're requesting here from the amendment has anything to do with this easement. So I don't think it's appropriate to include it in the findings. I do understand that it's a sensitive issue. But again, it shouldn't be part of the purview of this amendment.
Okay. Public comment is still open. Further comments?
Question for Joe, actually. So first of all, I appreciate Mr. Peters' intention of moving the dumpster to help alleviate the unsightliness from our lot. It's kind of easy to think about us in that way. My question for Joe is if the dumpsters move to the new proposed location, will that potentially impact truck traffic entering and exiting the property? Or will it have no impact on it?
You should know, it should have no impact or change of use. It would just be regardless of the truck came from the easement side or from the Route 1 side, in either location, it would impact turning movements, being able to access a dumpster, be able to access the loading areas of the building.
If that's the case, I don't think that we would have any problems moving the dumpster to that new location if it makes it easier for Mr. Peters' business operations.
I would suggest that the town engineer be given an opportunity to validate what their engineer said, that the turning movements wouldn't be infringed upon.
Okay, any other public comments?
Yes, my name is Tom Foley. I'm representing the True Spring Farm Condominium Association. And I have a question. Will the remainder of this meeting take place? Will you be looking at all the findings of facts that Carla has presented? Or is that subject for another meeting?
It would be part of this meeting if the process moves forward, yes.
Okay, then I will wait and have a question for clarification until that opportunity.
Well, you should ask it now because public comment will be closed.
From the planning board minutes from the original proposal, item J regarding noise, it said the backing up of trucks and loading bays would be create noise audible beyond the property lines. Hours of operation for truck deliveries pickups shall be limited to daylight hours. And then in the finding of facts in the new proposal, it says that now, that the, therefore, the hours of operation of truck deliveries pickups, including dumpster emptying, shall be limited to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. 7:00 p.m. half the year is well beyond daylight hours. So which is it going to be?
Yeah, I think that got changed to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. because daylight wasn't consistent, you know, in the wintertime. And I watched that video today and I think it was changed to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Or it was struck from the conditions of approval.
Okay, that decision has been made. So the proposal now will be that from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Carla?
Yes, I think so because that 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. is typically what we use in all site plans in terms of anything that would create noise, including when we do a pre-construction conference and we know the site contractors are going to be making noise. It's always 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The idea is that most people are awake during those hours and after that, they may be asleep and you don't want to disturb them. So if we had daylight hours, you know, the opposite of what you're saying is also true. It gets light at 6:00 o'clock in the morning. In part of the year, they could be out there making that noise at 6:00 o'clock in the morning. So the 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. is very typical.
Yeah, Carla, can I mention that if you look at the minutes from a year ago, Mr. Peters talked about much different hours. And I'm not sure we disapproved that. Are you sure that was the case? I don't have time to scroll through all of last year's minutes, but there was discussion about that and from Mr. Peters specifically. And I'm not sure we disagreed with that or not. I don't know.
In the videos, he said that.
That we may have approved it, is what I'm saying, that different hours.
He said employees would be arriving between 4:00 and 6:00.
He did, yeah. They have up to four deliveries a week. Employees will come in between 5:00 to 7:00 a.m. and get to work to go to a job site between 6:00 and 4:30. So I don't remember that we disagreed or not. So let's be sure about that when we come to the findings of fact.
Well, thank you. All I'm asking is that it be clarified and be consistent with good practices along the corridor.
Yeah.
So I hope to alleviate that confusion. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me mention one other comment because of Jason's weeds comment. I disagree with that totally. Mr. Neufeld, who was the representative a year ago, said that he's very cooperative, trying to meet the intent of the Route 1 design standards. If you look at the Route 1 design standards, landscaping, there's a whole paragraph and this applies to both. If you look at the Route 1 design standards, landscaping, there's a whole paragraph, and this applies to both, both parties. And I won't read it all, but there's a border around parking lots. Parking lots should be designed and landscaped to create a pedestrian-friendly environment. The Route 1 design standards are very specific of what we hope to achieve, so it's appropriate. It's not, it's not a comment on the, and again, going out in the weeds. It's part of the ordinance.
So, um, yes, I agree. I just don't want to become a mediator here.
Right, and Paul, what I would say is whatever we approve, we approve. And if the code enforcement officer finds that there's been a violation of that approval, then there is a process by which...
But I think it's appropriate to ask to see if, you know, where, where maybe we could go. So, I'm done.
Thank you, Paul. Public comment is still open. Anyone else? Okay, so we will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Any further questions or comments from the board? Go ahead.
Okay. It seems to me that, obviously, there was no disclosure of a circulation plan that would run large trucks through neighboring parking lots when this plan was brought to us. And that impacted our traffic circulation and parking findings, obviously. And I think that we probably need to change. I mean, that finding that things were fine was incorrect, and we became aware of it because the abutters brought it to our attention. And that was unfortunate, that the abutters did not know about the meeting last year, the public meeting. That was, that was tragic, as it turns out. And thank goodness, they did become aware and have made their comments. And so, I think we need to fix this problem. I think we need to fix our traffic circulation and parking. And I think that Bill Shane has expressed that quite well, what the problem is. And I'm just going to say, how, how should we do that? Probably we cannot reach a decision tonight. I think it is more complicated than we can reach a decision on tonight. But will, you know, if, can we go forward with approving the other stuff that's before us? Or will that also impact? As I, as I said previously, without the town engineer specifically looking at the circulation impacts of relocating the dumpster, I don't know why you would want to allow that. I think that's important to this, this operation and the issues that we have tonight. So, I, I think the tabling idea is appropriate, but it's obviously your call.
Well, I, we have handled similar things with conditions of approval. We could approve it pending the town engineer's review, that it won't affect site circulation. And to Ann's comments, I don't know what that easement says. We never reviewed that in the planning board. That easement could say commercial truck traffic is allowed along it. And I, I'm, Carla, I, I know you're shaking your head, but we haven't reviewed it. I do not know what's in it. I am not comfortable changing findings of fact that are not related to the, to the requested amendment. I, I, if the hours of operation are different, I am not comfortable changing the hours of operation because they came for an unrelated amendment. I'm, would be perfectly willing to put in conditions of approval that say nothing about this approval of the amendment in any way changes the prior findings of fact and the prior approvals. But I, I, I mean, and that's, this is just me. I mean, you, you guys can outvote me. I'm only one, one vote. But I would tell you that I'm not going to vote to adopt findings of fact that change findings that aren't related to the amendment.
Okay, Peter?
Well, I just think there's enough stuff up in the air. I'm not, I'm not prepared to, I think adequately repa- prepared because, again, with some of the open items and other stuff is discussed. I mean, I, at the appropriate time, I'm going to move to table this.
Okay, other comments? Bridget, go ahead.
No, I, I tend to agree. I don't think we have enough information, and I think a lot of what we needed came in beyond our deadline. And so, for that reason, I would say that I would agree that we should table.
And I'll make the motion to table.
Second.
Accepted. Thank you. Discussion.
It's not debatable. Motion to table is not debatable.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Not really.
Doesn't have anything to do with the tabling?
Can it be discussed after?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. I would ask that hopefully when this comes back in front of us, informally, obviously, you all can do what you want, but I would ask that hopefully that this is all ironed out, the stuff that has nothing to do with us, because I think part of the reason that this got tabled is because we don't want to make the problem worse. So, take that for what it's worth.
Yeah, Jason, before we stopped, Bob had suggested a site walk. I don't know about that, but does anybody else want to discuss that?
I'm open to it. I'm not sure that it's needed, but I think our, I would, I hope that the neighbors can work it out and then that that's confirmed to be ironed out by the time the rest of it get back, gets back to us. I think that's a reasonable ask. And I understand the frustration on both sides, having been on both sides of an overburdened easement. So, good luck to you all. You're right. Good luck to you.
Carla wrote up a finding of fact that went on for 10 different items. We're only here about the dumpster pad and the propane pad. That's what we're here for.
That's right.
We're not here to discuss the whole plan approval. That was Carla's doing when she wrote the finding of pad.
Thank you. The items have been tabled, and I'm sure we'll see it again. Thank you. Moving on to the, we have...
Mr. Chair, may, may I ask that question?
Yes, go ahead.
So, there are a number of items that we had requested. One, the dumpster pad. Two, the fire hydrant. I'm just trying to, the, the water service, I think, is a minor change. Grading changes, I think, are minor changes. It wouldn't make sense for us to go forward with a circulation plan to make sure that dumpster pad location works if the board is going to be completely against it when we get...
I would work with Carla on all of that.
Okay, so the straw boats, or any kind of general feeling about that?
It's tabled. The, the issue is done for tonight. Work with Carla on all of that, and then it'll come back in front of us again. Moving on. Item F3 is a public hearing for recommendation to the town council on proposed amendments to the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, Chapter 315, Zoning, Section 63, signs, signs, to ensure consistency with state guidelines for temporary off-premise, non-commercial signs. Carl, I assume you have nothing to add, and Bill can take it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Bill, take it away.
Very brief. This, this change to the sign ordinance basically comes under your purview to make a recommendation to the town council. Essentially, it's as simple as this. We want to be consistent with what the state requires. Six weeks, on the first six months of the year, on June 30th it expires, and six weeks from July 1st until December 31st. That's what we're asking to be consistent. Our ordinance currently was not written that way. It was written for 12 weeks over the course of the year. We'd like to do the same as the state does, which coincides with both the June election and the November election. So, I, I, I think it's a very minor request, and the ordinance committee recommended to come to the planning board for your input and recommendation. Hopefully, it'll be positive because we have it on the agenda for Monday evening, ahead of all the signs that are already going out.
For sure.
And it won't impact any of the signs that are up now.
Okay. Questions of Bill?
Yeah, Bill, all I see is that it eliminates the time limit. It doesn't add another time limit.
But then it defaults to the, the same, the same requirements as the state does. I, I'll have to pull it up so I can show you. You guys have a...
So, it defaults to some...
I don't have a printout of it. I'm sorry.
To all the other rules.
It's on the website, Bill.
That's right here.
What was the question? I have it up.
What, what are the time? What is, what's the time bound around the states?
Oh, okay. So, it's now temporary off-premise, non-commercial signs located, shall comply with the requirements of 23 MRSA as amended?
As amended, yes.
But is that a...
That's where you find the six weeks on each side of the calendar.
Okay, because that was, that's not a change unless it was in, in the amended statute.
This is what's, this is what's wiped out. Temporary off-premises, non-commercial signs may be placed within the public right of way for no more than six weeks per calendar year.
Right, but...
That's what's being stricken.
I, I understand. But does, does the 23 MRSA as amended, did the amendment change, add the timelines? Because it doesn't...
It does.
Okay.
It does. When you go...
So, before 23 MRSA did not have timelines. Now it does. So, we're changing the, the time restriction is now in the amended main statute, and we're eliminating conflicting language down below.
I'll say correct.
We're not making hours more strict than the states.
We are not.
Well, and I think when you put language like that, as amended, every time it gets amended, we're up to date because it says as amended. So, whatever the current amendment is, is what we comply with.
So, I would move that we recommend our, our approval of the proposed amendments to the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, Chapter 315, Zoning, Section 63, signs to ensure consistency with state guidelines for temporary off-premises and non-commercial signs. Second.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Paul. Further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Motion carries. Any administrative matters, new business from anybody? Random things?
I will mention one random thing. I'll, I'll be away in September, so hopefully we get this resolved.
Lucky, lucky you.
All right. And item H, adjournment.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Paul. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. Oh, wait, Peter, are you in favor of adjourning?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Thank you all.